The regular meeting, the Ohio Planning Commission for March second, two thousand twenty-two. Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Colsey?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Terrific. Uh, Jamie, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's time for public communications, the time set aside during this meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business that are not on the current agenda. Sherry, do we have anyone? Anyone in the waiting room with a hand up, Sherry?
We have Bill Miley and Chelsea Setulun, neither one have their hand raised.
Okay. Um, looking at the emails and such that came in, I suspect they both want to talk about item four. All right, there being no obvious uh takers on public communications, let's go to the consent items. Minutes of the regular meeting of February second, February ninth, and February sixteen. I sent Sherry a couple of bits. Did any other commissioners have any refinements to those meetings?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
On um, on the February ninth meeting, when we did the draft land use and transportation concepts, our, you know, we did talk about revisions to that. And um, I guess this is a question for staff, will we be seeing the revisions before it goes to council?
Uh, the plan is not, that I've, I've compiled those, those comments and provided them to, to the consultant. We actually just met today about it.
Yeah, I, well, I, I, I wish that we would, um, when we, we did, I mean, I thought this was a discussion item. I was actually kind of shocked to see that it was going to council. It's like, um, I didn't think we really um, kind of uh, finished up with that. And um, although that was, I don't know, I guess that was part of the motion. I guess I should have paid bit closer attention, but um, I just feel, uh, I, it's not, it's not, it's not any change to these minutes. I think it's just, I wish we could, maybe as a commission, we need to be more deliberative and have this stuff come back to us when we really just, and when it's discussion and we want revisions, that we need to see them come back to us, that's all. But uh, just, just a comment, not a, not a change.
I think, I think that's a good point. Um, is it possible, uh, Lucas, if you have a, a link to the, the, call it the final version that's gone to council, could you provide that to the commissioners?
Uh, yeah, not only will I, can I forward it to the full commission just as an informational piece, but we can also put it on um, the general plan update webpage, so we can splash it on that as well, so, so the community has.
Okay, uh, yes, Vice Chair Nolan?
Yeah, I, I do have a comment about that as well, and I'm just wondering, because we did make comments about it. In other words, we didn't just look at the draft and say, oh, we approve it, we did make comments. So would the motion be more appropriate um, with the insertion that um, we approved? Well, I don't, I'm just trying to think how to word this. But somehow include the fact that we did make comments. In other words, we didn't just approve it as is.
Ah, I see what you mean, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Though, at the least, we could have something like that.
Right.
I, and I don't know what the, I didn't go back to, to hear the exact wording, but I think our intention was, we made all the comments, we discussed, and that staff said they would incorporate those comments into the draft.
Right.
And just so the commissions aware, um, it was four pages of condensed comments um, that went forward to the consultant. So it wasn't one or two comments, there were, and they were covered within a lot of the forty-seven pages in total. I want to say three-fourths of those pages had comments, um, necessary revisions, additional information that needed to be included.
So I think the um, well, I think what where we're going with this is, should the motion have inserted into it uh, that we made com- had comments and recommendations? So in other words, it says, um, Vice Chair Nolan moved, and Chair Colsey seconded the motion to move that the city council proved the draft land use and transportation concepts for the Ohio General Plan Update. Somewhere in there, should we insert that we had comments and recommendations?
Or as amended, as a result.
Yeah, we could have the phrase at the end, as amended by commissioners' comments.
Yeah, I mean, I would be okay with that, too.
Yeah.
Because I think you want the person reading it understanding.
Exactly.
Not before, this is after the work process.
Yes, and that there were comments.
Doesn't have to detail anything, just to make it clear.
Right.
Didn't approve it as submitted.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy with that myself.
Okay.
Chair Colsey, I wasn't sure, were you actually um, going to go over the, the three weeks of minutes, item by item, or to do it kind of collectively?
Uh, well, since there is, since they're all on the consent calendar, we can do them uh, one by one for comments, and then if we have made changes, then a single motion to approve them all.
Okay, good, good.
So we have some changes, that was February ninth, right?
Correct, right.
Okay. Anyone have any uh, changes to the second or the sixteen? I just had a change of period to a comma or little nitsy stuff like that. Sherry got a couple of things from me. Well, hearing no other suggestions, could we have a motion to approve the consent items one, two, and three? Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we adopt the um, Ohio Planning Commission minutes from February second, February ninth, and February sixteenth with the one um, addition or amendment on February ninth. Um, and this was under discussion item one, that we add to the motion for the end of that motion amended with comments and recommendations.
No. Okay. We have a second?
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? All right, Sherry, please call the roll on one, two, and three.
Colsey?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, disclosure of site visits, I don't think that's appropriate this, this time. Uh, yes, please go ahead.
On the, on this, on this last item which I just passed, so this is now going to council as, as amended, both previously and then uh, as amended tonight, these, these three.
Right, it'll hit the council calendar, uh, consent calendar as a receive and file.
Right.
Yeah, that's sometime in the, in the future.
And, and it is after it has been on their docket and approved, or not approved, or amended, or requested, that um, that the things that we did here are, are, are considered adopted by uh, receiving and filing, is that correct?
Right, actually, I think legally, the minutes are supposed to record what we did at the meeting. And so we are the only ones that can approve the minutes. Council can't approve the minutes because they weren't taking part in the meeting. They are just receiving and filing the minutes that we approved. Is that correct, Epi?
That is correct.
Okay, but is it after they have received it and approved it, that someone um, an applicant can contest uh, what, what we had done, but not before the minutes on the meeting were filed?
An applicant can, can protest or appeal anything that we did, I think, at any time. They can appeal it to the city council. But that's appealing our action, not the minutes.
Right, right, but, but the, the transmission of our action to the city council is really officially done in the context of the sending them our minutes, so they can see what we, what we did.
Um, I guess so, but uh, Epi, could you give us a little insight there?
I, I think it depends on what the issue is, but generally, it's my understanding that the city processes um, and understands the appeal period to begin, uh, once the action at the meeting is taken, not when the minutes are written up and approved, because that can take time.
Well, it's, in particular, in this instance, it's taking a month.
Right.
Need to get these minutes submitted to the city council.
Right.
Going to take another week for them to see them and do something about it, so.
But it's also important to know what, what official action was taken.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Chair.
Oh, it's. We all learn from every one of these exchanges, Jamie. Uh, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts, there's no official site for a case this evening. But um, I guess it, it would be useful for commissioners to say whether or not they're familiar with at least the existing locations of the cannabis dispensaries and whether they've had any ex parte contacts. So I'll start and say, I know where they are, and I have not spoken to anyone about them outside of the communications that the council, that the uh, commission has received. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan?
I, I am also aware of their present location, and I've had no expertise contacts.
And Commissioner Lottis?
Um, the same here, I'm familiar with their location, I've had no exporte contacts.
All right, very good. Commissioner Trent?
Uh, familiar with the locations, and I did have a discussion with some folks about just the broader cannabis um, business or industry in Ohio, but not specifically about any business.
Okay, were any of those, were any of those conversations with, with people that are actually involved in the case, that is dispensary owners or anything? Okay. I, I think, Epi, then, that does not fall under ex parte, because you're not talking with anyone who's a party to the issue?
That is correct. Yeah, that in addition to the fact that no decision is made, um, we should allow Commissioner Trent to participate in the discussion tonight.
So. I, I think we all should feel free to talk with private citizens at any time, that, that they want to approach us about something that's about to come before us. I know I've certainly heard a lot from people about El Roblar and uh, like, get that one off our plate. Okay, and Commissioner Bennett?
Uh, I'm familiar with the locations, and uh, I've had no expert partake conversations, but like uh, Commissioner Brent, um, I have talked to individuals who have had a point of view about this, the topic, um, but none of them were uh, in any way involved in the discussion, except perhaps as consumers.
Yes, okay. Very good. Then let's move on to item four, a discussion item, review of the cannabis. Now, this discussion, here we are again with a discussion item, Lucas. If, if, are, are we supposed to come up with recommendations to the city council tonight on all of the cannabis regulations? Or are we simply discussing it tonight and uh, saying, well, this is at least a part of how we feel about things?
Yes, that is the uh, discussion for tonight now, isn't it? Here's, here's what I'd like to do, I've got a, a three or four slide PowerPoint I'd like to run through, just to kind of help set the table for the, for the discussion. And then we'll see where that goes as Q and A comes up, as the public has an opportunity to provide comments. Um, it's hard, it's hard for me to say either way at this point, I think it's, it, it bears in mind that, that the whole purpose of tonight is really to have a discussion. Is it going to get laid out um, and decisions made tonight from the planning commission? That remains to be seen. Is it going to require two meetings? That remains to be seen. Maybe, maybe not. Let me run through the PowerPoint. I think the, the commission has had an opportunity to read the staff report and all the um, all the documents that go along with that, um, including a, a map with some uh, with some buffers with it as well, so. Let's start with that first.
Okay, please go ahead.
Share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Well, that's better.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's a little bit bigger, yeah.
So I think it's important to identify that kind of the history of cannabis, um, especially obviously within the city of Ohio. You know, in two thousand and, first of all, my name is Luke Seibert, uh, Community Development Director here for the city of Ohio. Uh, the item we're discussing tonight is the review of cannabis regulations pursuant to Title Four, Chapter Twenty-Six, which has the title Cannabis Use and Cultivation. The history, as we um, start looking at kind of the uh, specifics of it, dates back to really two thousand and sixteen for the city of Ohio, that's when regulations regarding medical cannabis dispensaries and cannabis use, personal use and non-commercial cultivation were um, identified and approved by um, city council ordinance. Then fast forward two more, two years to two thousand and eighteen, it was uh, further clarified through use and cultivation of cannabis regulations for cannabis testing laboratories. That expansion in two thousand and nineteen, a year later, regulations regarding the use and cultivation of, of cannabis, which really kind of relates to micro business and cannabis manufacturing, were further clarified and um, expanded upon. That then for, forwarded us to August of two thousand twenty-one, where potential revisions were discussed um, um, by city council regarding current cannabis regulations. And really, there's three points that were brought forward. And then those three points were further discussed in um, a meeting in November by this, by a city council, which then revolved around whether to explore allowance of dispensaries outside of the M-one MPD zones. Um, and that's where they're currently living, residing, uh, and then that would be potentially into, and this was discussed at city council, uh, the east end of Ohio, uh, whether to consider allowing onsite consumption lounges, lounges in compliance with state law. And then the third is whether to modify code to allow onsite consumption inside uh, dispensaries. That would be allowing vaping, topicals, and edibles potentially, or none, or a combination of those. Uh, from a history standpoint, the city currently has three licensed and operating dispensaries. I think that's important to note, that that's separate than the two manufacturing facilities that are currently in process. And then we also have uh, one testing lab in process. Should be noted that there are currently no cultivation. Um, it's prohibited within the city for, for commercial use.
Uh, Lucas, when you say in process, you mean they're in the midst of, of uh, applying for permits and that process is not done?
Correct, they're going through, they're going through our process.
Okay.
Yeah, they have admitted they're not, that, it, it basically means that they're, they are not, they are not open yet, and they have not received the full gambit of, of uh, necessary review or approval. Um, city council direction, which was provided back in November of twenty um, twenty-one, really looking at reviewing existing regulations, those re- regulations revolve around consumption lounges. They revolve around expanding and the expansion of the, the area, the, the bucket in which the, this cannabis use is currently allowed, which is the um, M-one MPD zone. Um, it's really manufacturing, that's our zone, potentially into the C-one. Um, and then obviously the cultivation, the third piece to that leg, is the cultivation uh, as a, as a nursery. Breaking it down into those three components, the consumption lounges, uh, not currently allowed, but could be allowed with regulations, um, code, basically a code amendment within the M, M-one or MPD. I mean, that, that area is already, already allows for cannabis, it'd be looking for the expansion of consumption lounges, uh, that could consider edibles only as, as smoking is currently prohibited per the Ohio municipal code. Could take forward re- recommendations to allow cannabis lounges, allowing smoking and vaping, it could impose a larger buffer area if recommended to council, and that's above the six hundred foot minimum buffer. That six hundred foot minimum buffer is really taken from state law, there is this uh, buffer zone, um, which really is, is more for s- uh, school districts, we could even expand it to, to specific types of sensitive uh, uses that we consider. Those regulations are, are within the um, purview of, of this commission as a recommendation to, to council. Addition to that, expanding into the C-one zone is something that, the council had kicked to the planning commission to consider, to kind of chew the fat over. There's current regulations which limit cannabis businesses within the M-one MPD. Uh, there is, there is no regulations that allow for these, these types of cannabis uses within the C-one. Um, the, the commission could consider expansion of the C-one as a part of an overlay, which may be necessary for this. Uh, overlays just as an, as an overview for overlays. Um, they can, overlays as a zoning tool or land use tool can be kind of identified. And I'll, I have a slide that'll, we can go into this a little more, I just want to give the thirty seconds on um, overlays. Uh, they can be within a specific area, they can be um, parcel by parcel. You can be very specific, and then you can build the rules uh, through that specific overlay. The base lo- zone would still rule, but the overlay would then allow for some exceptions, some of the, some of the use aspects, or even standards, developed standards, hours of operation, use criteria could be further um, carved out, so.
A good example there would be the SPL overlay, which does go parcel by parcel and allows for construction of affordable housing with density bonus.
Precisely. That, we also have the, the TCO overlay, um, which is really the Thoroughfare Corridor overlay. And that's along Ohio Ave and Maricopa Highway, so that, that is another specific area, very specific, really only for those businesses fronting along Ohio Avenue. And um, and I believe Maricopa. And that requires specific standards to be met that are independent of um, other uses outside of that, those, those parcels that are fronting um, Ohio Ave, so. That's another example. Overlay is providing priest flexibilities, I, as I was speaking to uh, this earlier, but also identifies and is mindful of other restrictions for specific uses not imposed on others. And I think that's kind of important to, to note um, with.
Give us an example, please?
Well, like, all, when we go to the buffer, I'll, I'll kind of uh, walk through where, where the six hundred foot buffer is a specific example where the overlay wouldn't be appropriate there, something because state law already identifies a minimum six hundred foot buffer for sensitive um, uses such as, as schools, public schools. Um, so that's, I think that's an important piece to, to keep in mind, that we are, while it's not limitless, we have certain parameters that help set the table for, for the discussion tonight already.
Uh, Jamie?
Now, Lucas, you just said uh, for public schools, you're saying the, a private school is not um, uh, considered with a bu- in the, in the buffers.
The map shows it for OBS.
Yeah, I'm in.
I can jump in here, Lucas, I believe it also includes, the language in the um, state law, it says K through twelve, I believe.
Okay.
Um, or maybe, yeah, it might even be a little bit more fancy, but I believe that includes.
I asked then, because that was my, my assumption was seeing OBS in there, that it was, it did cover private schools. But the Wild Tennis Academy, which, which builds itself as a private secondary boarding school. I may even go into middle school, I'm not sure, but it certainly is a private uh, school. Um, I believe within the six hundred foot radius, perhaps of the, the existing uh, Bryant Circle um, venues. Um, the other thing is, I know that in San Francisco, which does have um, dispensaries, uh, that it's a thousand foot, so there are different applications here. And uh, obviously, in a, in a tight urban zone, it's hard to find, when you throw a thousand foot net out there, uh, an area to do something, um, so, but I don't think we necessarily have to be tied to that. Um, the, the six hundred foot, just because it's in state law.
Yeah, and I would say the six hundred foot, even as a use, as a buffer, is the floor, not the ceiling. So I think, keep that in mind.
That's correct, and I, I'd just like to um, jump in and just mention that it also includes uh, daycare centers and youth centers also, so. But uh, as, as Commissioner Bennett pointed out, uh, some cities are stricter, and um, not only do they have a, a further buffer, but you know, it could also be for parks and other um, facilities as well.
Well, I'd like to uh, ask a clarifying question then. On Quail Oaks, which is a hundred, a hundred yards or less from my home, there is a group home. This came before the, the city a while back, several years, um, where they have a, a home for troubled teens, and I think up to six clients at a time. Does that also fall under uh, the category of you have to draw a six hundred foot radius around it, minimum?
No, I don't believe so, uh, Chair. I'd have to double check. Um, but I believe last time I looked at the um, statute and then associated Department of Cannabis Control Regulations, um, that it didn't mention anything about homes, I'm not sure that a group home would qualify as a school um, or another, uh, but I know that some, uh, that our, our firm has worked for uh, other clients who have used broader language such as youth-serving facility, which might include or, or could include a, a group home for um, teens.
Okay, I, I noted that uh, Wild Tennis Academy was brought up, but I didn't, I didn't understand a, a clear answer to, is there a six hundred foot radius around Wild Tennis Academy? I, I look at, I look at my zoning map from the city, and it looks to me like the Wild Tennis Academy property is PL zone. Um, and so, I'm not sure what we do with that, because that's either government or schools or churches.
Well.
PL zone typically.
Chair?
Yes.
On the map, and it doesn't have a page number, or it did, and it's been punctured by a, a hole. Um, it's, it's uh, near the end, it is the six hundred foot buffer around schools, public and private daycares.
Yeah.
Youth hyphen youth facility, so um, I presume, and, and eyeballing it, it's got the scape mark in it, but it, it does not have the area where the tennis academy, there's not a bubble around, the six hundred foot bubble around.
Right, I'm, I'm trying to understand, does the city, does the city recognize that as a school? And um, so where do we stand? Is, is that something that needs a buffer? It's.
Yeah, so I, for, for the purposes of, of that specific question, I can iron that out by looking. I need to look at specifically what the business license allows for, and how it was described. I know we're talking about the, the, understanding what the tennis academy, academy is in terms of how we understand it. I need to understand from business license standpoint, and how we've approved it, um, what that uses specifically. I don't, I don't want to get into the hearsay of what the Tennis Academy.
No.
Or it could be from a use standpoint. I didn't include it in, in this map, and I, I just want to get through this PowerPoint before we start having discussions, because right now, I don't think anybody can see our faces.
We don't want to stop you, we want to.
Let me just, let me just finish here. Uh, okay, so moving on to, because I've got a, a buffer map that we can talk about as well. Uh, again, reviewing existing regulations, cultivation, nursery as the third leg to this chair is um, the meaning code allows indoor cultivation, but only for personal use in a private residence, and then it puts a specific restriction on a not to exceed six plants. So it's really, it's not meant for commercial use, uh, and obviously, we have commercial use prohibited Within the current code, state law would allow for cultivation through a specific license type four. Um, and the planning commission can certainly talk about whether or not that is something to consider. Like I said before, not currently allowed at a commercial level, so.
But at type four, though, is that specifically for commercial cultivation? Or is it just a more than six plants at a time kind of thing without regard to the use?
That's a question for Appy.
Yeah, so the the city's municipal code has a ban on commercial cultivation. So I believe the type four license and uh is for nursery license, type four is the state designation for nurseries. So we use, we're kind of using the term nursery slash cultivation here, um but. Uh, because the state kind of uses that language as well, um but it's separate from commercial cultivation. Um, and uh it would still be allowable um under uh could be allowable under our uh our code regulations.
So the city ban on commercial cultivation. Would still allow a type four license from the state, is that what you're saying?
We could allow it. We also have, in addition to the state's, sorry, in addition to the city's municipal code. We also have uh regulations uh issued by the city manager, which the are la- are authorized under the municipal code. So uh, we could either amend the municipal code to allow for nurseries, cannabis nurseries. Or we could do it kind of through a code interpretation, um.
But as it currently stands, a type four license would not be allowed in the city?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry, please go ahead, Lucas.
And here's the last slide. So this last slide is kind of the bread and butter, I think it's kind of, I probably should have started with this. This is what everybody. Was kind of talking about, um which is the six hundred foot buffer around schools, public and private daycares, youth. Facilities, um. I focused the area around Ojai Avenue and those specific uses. Um, that are that are kind of surrounding it. So you'll see the buffers, each of these buffers in blue. Are a six hundred foot radius as the minimum. Remember, that's the floor that we're talking about. I think Commissioner Bennett had spoken about um a s- community, a city up north. Where they're you looking at, I think it was San Francisco or Sacramento, a a thousand foot radius. That could be what we look at as well for this, um. So those those are the, those are the types of discussions that are certainly on the table. I also want to note that if you're looking at this map. This, this red is the boundaries of the city. So just be aware of that as well.
Um, okay, if if. If the commission saw its way to. To allow this sort of thing, but put the six hundred foot radius buffer around everything. Does that mean then that any property outside of that six hundred foot radius? Would be in a position to ask to open a dispensary or. A consumption lounge or whatever, and the city would have no basis to deny the request.
That's what we're doing tonight, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a discussion for.
Well, it's part of what we're discussing tonight, but I'm trying to understand the implications of the buffer zone. Because I look at that map right now and, for example, things that are outside the buffer zones would include. The Ojai Public Library, the Playhouse, and the southern half of the Y Shopping Center.
Chair Quilsey?
Yes.
I I I think the, if I could address your question, I, so this map is helpful in understanding the buffer, but not helping for understanding the zoning. Right, so this map shows all the zoning available in the city. It doesn't break it down. Currently, right, this map would need to be overlaid on a map of just the. MPD zone, which is currently where allowed and the discussion of the commercial zone. So the C one zone, so it show if you much more limited to where cannabis businesses could. Would expand or were considering or discussing expanding under discussion tonight.
Well, all the places that I mentioned are in the TCO, that's why I ask.
Right.
Okay, um, I guess we'll we'll have to discuss that some more later. Go ahead, Lucas.
So anyway, I, what I wanted to note here is there, I think what Chair Quilsey had noted is there is a little area here. As as potential opportunity, the east end, which I know council had spoken about. As a potential area for maybe an overlay or at least for discussion for that. And then there appears to be a little bit of an area here, which is a part of the Vons, um shopping center, which. Doesn't quite encompass and is outside of that six hundred foot, so. I think those are, those are things to to think about. Uh, you're right, I didn't overlay the zoning. Simply because I wanted to kind of start from the beginning regarding this buffer. And and see where it goes from there. So anyway, I'm gonna end the slideshow, but we can always go back to it. And then I'm gonna stop sharing.
I think we're probably gonna have to discuss it more than just the four slides, yeah. There's, there's a lot of material there.
Yeah, I'll take a shot. It's now is an appropriate time to make an observation.
Uh, well, we're we're still in the in the area of asking clarification questions of staff. And then I think we need to. We need to have public comment and then we can come back to deliberations. So Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yes, I have a question regarding cultivation. Um, that could mean many different things that I know we're. You know, predominantly looking at indoor cultivation. Is there a description of that, meaning is it in a greenhouse or could it be in a warehouse with? You know, where you bring lights in and you control it. I'm just curious as to what that means or 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 is it open? Could be either one.
If I could have the city attorney respond to the to the license type, I think, regarding the nursery, I think that's an important piece. Because I think that helps to answer the question that.
Yes, yeah. Like the rear.
Uh, as I told Chair Quilsey earlier, I think it would have to be either a change to the uh city's. Municipal code to an an addition to allow nurseries, then we could just, you know, so that is open for discussion about what would be allowed. Um, but nurseries are um kind of cultivation that's done by businesses. Um, so they would not be for in uh, it wouldn't be outside, I believe, um. Uh, based on whatever the state regulations, um and uh. They would uh have to follow, we could impose additional regulations on them as well, excuse me.
I think, I think that's the essence of Vice Chair Nolan's question. If the commission said yes to cultivation, what is it saying yes to?
Oh, gotcha. It's only si- right.
If you can, if you can dig into that a little more. And maybe, uh I don't mean go research it right now and come back with an answer. But at least um, uh commit to letting us understand that aspect of it. Before I think we pass anything along to the city council. Uh, I think. I at least would prefer to make a more informed decision.
Understood. I think the, without doing any further research, I think the staff report, um, kind of on the bottom of page five. Describes what is in a type four um nursery license, or at least kind of the sketches, the broad outlines of it.
Um. Okay, so the question that I am asking is, um. So the type four license allows up to one acre with outdoor, indoor mixed light and can transport live plants.
Yeah.
Presently, and I, I thought we, if they, at this point, because of the odor. Issue, and I know this was even in the surrounding area in the county. That. Well, I guess this maybe this is up for discussion, for us to say, oh, is outdoor allowed or is only indoor allowed? And if it is indoor, my question is, is there a definition, or maybe there isn't? Does indoor mean that it's grown in a greenhouse, or could it be basically in, you know? Pre-existing warehouse, like say in the M, one of the M zones. Where you would just bring in lighting and you know, you accommodate your drainage. You can't grow inside with artificial lighting. So i- is that defined or is that just totally up in the air right now?
First part of your question, outdoor cultivation and growing is prohibited unless for personal, right, sorry, outdoor cultivation is prohibited, sorry, just that's, that's.
Which I thought, yeah.
Right, uh but you're you're correct that it is up for discussion. I don't believe there is a definition of um. Just got distinction between warehouse and greenhouse in the.
Okay, so and the reason I'm bringing that up is, um, you know, typically in nursery is typically zoned agricultural. Um, but you know, of course, we could make the exception, but I think that's something we may want to consider in our discussion. Um, as to what zone this could happen in and what would it look like or could it look like? The operation, um. I won't say too much more now. I mean, I do have some thoughts on it, but I'm just, I think maybe just to get the conversation going.
I think we'd all benefit from a little more.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question to staff and that is, do the applicants want to address this issue of cultivation, or are they looking? Primarily for a second site for their. Current businesses which are located down Bryant and uh and that they want to be up on Fifth Avenue or.
Perhaps to back up a little bit, do we have any applicants on this issue?
No, this, this is, this isn't an applicant driven um discussion, just just to clear the air for the commission here. This is, this was, this was directed by city council. And this is, this is an item that was brought forward by by SNAP. There are certainly individuals, let me finish, there are certainly individuals that will speak on this item during during public comment, I I believe. But it's not applicant um driven, meaning I don't have an applicant that's gonna be speaking on this item around tonight.
Just interested parties, Commissioner Trent?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions uh for the cultivation piece, um. Just curious on what kind of requirements we can establish, like like air filtration. Um, you know, air circulation. Um, I know that, you know, cities like Carpinteria have had a hard time with controlling the the odor. Um, they've required some filtration systems that need to be in place, which are really expensive, but. Um, supposed to help. I don't know if anything eliminates the smell, but. Um, I'm just curious, how far can we go with the regulations or the requirements?
Happy?
Sure, um, uh, pretty far, it depends on, um. You know, they, you could, we could recommend that uh if the city decides to go on this, down this route. Um, whether it's nurseries or consumption lounges. Uh, that this could be done by ordinance, it could be done by regulation, it could be done by development agreement. Um, so baking something in with each uh applicant or successful applicant. Um, so, uh, pretty far, uh I would say, um in terms of addressing those uh concerns.
Okay, cool. And then another quick question, um. In in the city council discussions, um, has there been any talk around what the benefit is to Ojai and why we would want this?
We have a city council member with us this evening.
I mean, this is.
I I don't want to put him on the spot, though.
Just asking if there's been discussion.
Yeah, just if there's been discussion. Right.
Which I'll, um, you know, it's interesting, and and I'll and I'll state this so you guys all know. Out of the five council um people, I was the the lone no vote on moving this discussion forward. So I'm just gonna stay that upfront, so um and and then I'm gonna hold back. Of those opinions, those personal opinions, and give you the gist of the conversation. That um, that there are a uh uh existing group of uh. Cannabis retailers that would like to um increase their business opportunities. They feel in a positive way, so I'm gonna go along with that, that that they feel is positive for them and positive for the community. The question that council was asking was, um, if so, where can they do that? And that um, that comes into, and I was looking at your discussion here, um. Um, you know, kind of outlines here whether to consider allowing onsite consumption lounges. So can they take what they have and add lounges to them? Or can they relocate to a different zone to area? Which is what you're gonna discuss later, and if so, when they move that business, can they now encompass their original? Um, uh, business license along with. Um, a lounge or incorporating a lounge. And also.
Land use, yeah.
So that, so that's where that comes in, so that was the, that's why we forward it to you to have that discussion, um. Uh, whether to allow retail dispensaries, which is what we have, and we have them in the M one over on Bryant. Do you want to leave them there, or do you feel, do you, does the planning commission feel comfortable with moving them outside of that and putting them on Main Street? So that's a question that you have to ask. If you do decide that it's okay to move to Main Street. Then your next question is, how do you do that? And what are the uh applicable zoning regulations that you you would have to either? Uh, adjust or. Or reallocate or redo, um, so that's part of your discussion in here. Um, and then the third one is the whether to consider allowing limited scale indoor nurseries. Only cultivation license, so that people per sheet purchasing ceilings and clones do not have to travel, so again. Um, that goes back to Kathy's discussion, is that if you want to allow nurseries. You, yes or no? If it's yes, where? Where's the appropriate place for them? And I believe that you, as the planning commission, have the right to dictate what type of nursery. Um, y- you would like to see, whether it's um. Um. In-house lighted, outdoors, natural lighted, um. Hydroponically, how, you know, you guys can dictate the terms of how you want something to be grown.
Nursery mean, yeah.
Yeah, so you get to define that. Um, and I think if you do those three things specifically. As you're going through your discussion tonight after public comment. I think you'll answer each of your questions appropriately as you go through that. But I would break down the first weather, the second weather, and the third weather. And really get clarification, because each one will be applicable to the next one, with number three being almost the only standalone request. Is if we're gonna allow cultivation, where? And also, um, how much, how big, how, you know, how large, that's something that's in your purview. Uh, so I think that's how I I would approach this, and then I would also. Suggest uh that you don't get stuck in the mindset that you're gonna solve this problem tonight. Because reading the packet, I think there's a lot more information that you need. Uh, to specifically help guide you to come to a reasonable answer in response to the city council. Um, so, do, please don't think you're gonna make a decision tonight. I would think taking public comment, listening to the concerns of the community, um, they're gonna talk about the benefits. I don't see anything in what I read that talks about the cons. So you're gonna have to to address those personally and collectively. And then that's gonna help you weigh what you see moving this, um, this forward. So I hope I answered the question. I hope I didn't provide too much, um, uh. I think Trent's last que- that Trent's, John's question was about taxation. And I think that that's something that you can reasonably look at. That if you're going to do this. Um, what are we charging now and what do you feel? What do you consider that by allowing this type of new operation? Um, do we tax it? And if we tax it, what rate do we tax it at? Um, the other question is, if I have an existing business, can I open another cannabis lounge? Or do they have to be um in conjunction to one another?
Or separately licensed?
Right, so you can see that there's a lot of questions that need clarification. I'm I'm seeing from Epi. Um, that he needs to do a little more research on 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 this. And I think it's a moving target cannabis in general, uh. But if we're gonna do it. I think the most important thing is that we do it um wisely. And we do it in consideration of the entire community. Um, and that you make your best decisions um based on the best facts and information that you can gather.
Super, thank you very much for that, sir. Uh, any other commissioners have clarification questions before we start public comment? Yes, Mr. Bennett?
Um, to uh to Lucas and and as you think about. Um, a multi-meeting approach towards this would be helpful. Um, if we could have a map which also uh focuses on. That area, because the council has, I think, said C one east end. As the target that they want us to look at. Um, and if we look at C one east end, I'd be interested in how many parcels are available. That do not have an immediately adjacent.
I'd be interested in how many parcels are available that do not have an immediately adjacent residence. Um, but i- is not in our zone, because if I, if I were in a, a a vacant lot, if I, if I had a house on one of these streets and there's a vacant lot next to me and a cannabis store went into that vacant lot, so my house is now cannabis retail adjacent as opposed to uh vacant lot adjacent, it would be big. We, strangely enough, it doesn't. There, there is some of that down in Bryant Circle area, but it's, it's mostly um the uh, um, uh, the development down there, and so it's sort of behind people's backyards or, you know, sort of not where their houses are. Um, so, but this, I believe, if we go from the, from the blue bubble um, that, that is easternmost and go to the city limit, that an awful lot of those lots are, have immediately uh, um, residential adjacencies and which you don't see in the industrial zone, in the manufacturing zone.
I'm, I'm curious, Epi, is, is, is the six hundred foot radius or any other buffer that we might decide? Uh, does that apply only to schools, public and private daycare, youth facilities? Or is there anything related to residential parcels?
Uh, there's a definition in the regulations, which is issued by these, the state, the Department of Cannabis Regulations, um, that defines residential area and says uh six hundred feet as well. Other than commercial hotels uh and similar establishments for temporary lodging.
Oh, you could add that to this map.
So, so we should have a blue buffer around all residential areas?
Uh, yes.
Or even if it's a different color, I don't know, maybe there'll be no.
I don't care either, yeah. Uh, I think that would, that would be very edifying for the commission before we make any recommendations. I think the center of Bryant Circle is probably within six hundred feet of residential properties already, but I don't know, I'll leave that to staff to figure out.
Yeah, the school may, the tennis academy may be the, the only glitch.
Yeah, and that's, that's again, a definition of what is it? What is it? Is it a school that requires a buffer? And, and if, if as Epi says, the, the state law requires a buffer around residential properties, uh, then I think it would help the commission to see what those are. And I love this overhead. But I think at this point, if we had a, just uh the regular zoning map, not a zoning map necessarily even, but just, just a Google Maps type thing where we'll all recognize what the streets are and just show us what the buffers are there. And then we'll have an idea of, in fact, whether there's any possibility of putting something along Ojai Avenue in the east end, if there is a six hundred foot buffer required.
Commissioner, sorry, I just, I, sorry, I misspoke. I had two things up. It looks like the six hundred feet for residential is just with laboratory testing and uh the vehicles there. So it's not around.
What, what vehicles?
There's a separate section with this laboratories and laboratory vehicles used to transport cannabis where there's a six hundred feet requirement from residential areas.
Like deliveries from a dispensary or what?
No, not deliveries. Uh, it's, it deals with the parking of testing vehicles and, you know, that may be transporting cannabis.
Okay, I, I think we need to understand that a little better, too.
Yeah. Um, so, so are you saying, Epi, are you saying that would the city have any discretion in terms of adding buffers from residential properties?
The city can add buffers if it wanted to.
But, but you're thinking it's not currently in the state code. It's not, it's, it would not be coming from the state as a, as a requirement.
Okay, okay. All great clarifications, thank you. Any, any other questions for staff at this point? All right, well, let's uh, let's move to public comment. And Sherry, if you can tell us, uh, there must be at least a couple of people in the waiting room that wanna speak.
Got Chelsea on?
Hi Chelsea, your hand up, please go ahead. Uh, you.
Hi, can you hear me?
And uh, I guess we're going with the three minute rule at the moment anyway. Uh, tell us what you think.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm Chelsea Satula, I'm the owner operator of Sespe Creek Collective, and yes, I definitely have a vested interest in this conversation. I did ask to present to the commission to clarify all of these points, which um I, I definitely could have spoken to unfortunately better than your attorney. And I was denied that opportunity, so I'm gonna try to cram a lot of facts into this three minutes. Um, I do wanna say that since we opened in twenty seventeen on Bryant, we've been a model business. We now have a starting wage of twenty dollars an hour and we pay full benefits to our employees. We've won the best uh of Ojai Award three years in a row. We help thousands and thousands of our residents here find ailment, find cures for their ailments and and relaxation and, and ways to reduce their stress. And one, the major reason why these conversations are coming forward, the major benefit to Ojai, I'll speak to that point. There is a huge outcry. People are anxious for alternatives to bars. And that's all that commission and council seems to be approving these days. More bars, more breweries, more and more alcohol. Some of us don't wanna drink alcohol every night and go clubbing and bars, and maybe that's fine with the rest of council members that are opposed to opening lounges. But the rest of the community honestly wants alternatives. Um, another benefit to the city of Ojai, as one of the only businesses that's subject to a gross receipts tax, all of the income we make is subject to gross receipts tax. In the last fourteen months, Sespe Creek alone has put over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the city's coffers. And that's twenty-five percent lower than your budget predicted, because our revenues are falling. And so I'm here to tell you that this affects your budget. I'm trying to find creative ways to um bring new exciting things to Ojai that are not a nuisance. Nobody is complaining about odors, because it's not a problem. Um, we just wanna stay competitive at this point. Oxnard's opening sixteen dispensaries, Port wine Eme has multiple, Port wine Eme is opening lounges, Port wine Eme just approved four cannabis festivals a year. So everybody else kind of around us in Ventura County now sees the benefits and also sees the lack of problem. Ojai seems to now, even for being a first mover, Ojai seems to now be stuck in this drug war mentality that this is some evil thing that only bad people do. And that kids are suffering and that kids are, you know, are, are subject to our villainous, you know, advertising. I mean, please, like, we're all adults here. Our average customer age is like fifty. And again, we're, we're trying to stay competitive, we're trying to stay um real here. We have people in wheelchairs coming down Bryant Avenue, because it's not accessible to public transportation. And that's sad. We want to be more visible. Nobody, a lot of people don't even know where we are. And we want to be visible enough so that people know that we're there, so that they continue to put tax dollars in your coffers. Honestly, we're just trying to stay alive. Um, you can dive into the research on how overtaxed we are as an, as an industry, um, as people working in the industry. It hasn't changed since Biden administration took over. Um, as far as the cultivation situation, yes, this is what we're asking for is to grow plants, little, little seedlings, little clones that don't have any odor yet. It's little baby seedlings that we would sell to a consumer that wants to buy their six plants that they can grow. And that's what we would, we would be wanting to do in Bryant in a little warehouse, nondescript warehouse with odor systems in place. You know, five hundred, seven hundred fifty square feet. This is a tiny thing that we're asking for there. The lounges can be done um all kinds of different ways. There's many other cities in the state of California and other cities across the country that have already done this. They're already doing this. It's not anything new. Um, you can have smoking, you can have vaping, you cannot have smoking, you can only have edibles. Um, right now, we can't even let people put topicals on their hands and test to see if they like the texture of a cream before they walk out of the store. That's a real basic consumption option that is, is a benefit to consumers that don't wanna waste a lot of money on a product that they don't like. So those are the, some of the kind of things that we're asking for to just sort of open up. We're just asking for parity with alcohol and bars. We pay a lot of money into the city coffers to still be treated kind of like second or third class business citizens. And to be fair, during the pandemic, we were one of the top three sales taxpayers, I believe, in the city, because we were just designated essential and we didn't close, like Ojai Valley enclosed. So, you know, we're, I think what we're asking for is fair. We just wanna be normalized a little bit and not treated as villains. Um, your friends and neighbors, if, if you're not coming in your shop, your friends and neighbors are. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time and thoughtful discussion on this map.
Okay, ma'am, you, you made a, you made mention of the fact that the sales tax or the gross receipts tax, whatever, that you've paid was twenty-five percent below the city's estimate. Is that, you think, because COVID kept all businesses receipts down? Or do you think it was an overestimate by the city as what, what you might contribute? Or do you see increased competition from outside the city? Or is there something else?
No, it's not COVID, because twenty nineteen was a, a really um big year for us. Twenty twenty, um, dispensaries coming online in other cities around us, more deliveries coming in from LA. There's more competition and the wholesale price of cannabis is bottomed out. Also, more people are growing at home. And they don't need to come into the shop on certain, you know, seasons of the year, our sales are completely dropped out. This December, we had, we were in the red. We did not make a profit in December. So, um, the city did overestimate. They did their best based on actuals from the year prior. But that, that was the top, and this, it's, it's only going down from here. Um, I would, I would say extreme outside competition and the, the high taxes that are subject to this make the black market just as stronger than it's ever been.
Okay, if you're, if you are cultivating seedlings and selling those to your customers, aren't you sort of competing with your retail business?
Yes, I am, but you know what? They would be buying seeds and getting clones cuts from their friends anyway. As, uh, this is an ethical stance I take. I believe in the right to farm. So even though it does cut into my bottom line, I would still rather sell a quality product to people that um, they're still coming to my shop to get, you know, a tincture that they can't make at home or a cookie that they can't bake. They're still coming to us for advice and, uh, you know, a, a pipe to smoke it in. So it does cut into, to my profits and on the one hand, on the other hand, we're a full-service dispensary and that's part of our way of being full service.
Building goodwill, okay. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, go ahead, John.
Oh, Chelsea, just a quick question. Um, you mentioned um at the peak, um, when, when you guys were doing really well. Um, was, was a lot of your, most of your business or some of your business coming from out of town?
You know, we, as long as I've been tracking it, we, about eighty percent of our clientele is Ojai Valley. Uh, the twenty percent outside of that is maybe ten percent from Santa Barbara, from LA. And then, you know, the rest is like random tourists, yeah, but vast majority is Ojai Valley um, and, and Ventura, you know, that North Ventura.
North Ventura. So when you, when you're mentioning with the increased competition from the other cities, um, does, does that just mean that, is it that twenty percent that's going away? Are you still getting eighty percent of folks?
No, uh, across the board, sales are down in all categories, I would say, because there's just more, there's more delivery services operating from LA that will advertise, uh, our, our brands are, are selling direct to consumers now. It's like, it, it's coming from all angles. Um, I, I, it's just coming from all over the place, yeah.
Got it. So Ojai residents are, they're, they, they have more options with delivery services.
Yes, they do, and they, 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 there's more in Santa Barbara this year from now. Um, Ojai people are still largely shopping here, but um, uh, you know, all the business that we had from Ventura that was coming up or Santa Paula now, they have other places to go. Um, and, but the other thing, the, the other major point here, it's not that they're, that we're losing people from Ojai Valley, but that they're just spending less, because prices are dropping. The wholesale price of cannabis now is nothing compared to what it was two years ago. And this is, we're actually facing an extinction event right now for s- small farms, the legacy small farms here. And, and Sespe's really doubling down to try to support them. We're trying to avoid, you know, buying all of our product from the big box retailers that are open in, in Santa Barbara and that buy the warehouses in Camarillo. That's the that's big, that's Walmart right there. That's the Walmart of weed and it's in our backyards. And all we can do is support our small farmers and encourage home growing and give people options.
I would, I would think that the wholesale price of cannabis hitting the floor would be good for your business, because that's what you're paying to stay in business, right?
It would be, but it's, it's not. People, people aren't buying more. You can only consume so much weed, right? So they're, they're enjoying benefits, but they're, the inflation, they're, they're buying what they can afford. Given the fact that their dollar doesn't buy as much now as it did yesterday. So all these, there's all kinds of economic forces here. People's, during the pandemic, when people have had their um pandemic money to spend, we saw a great bump from that. People were all stressed out and, and spending time at home. That money's gone. Um, people are, people are broke. Um, even in Ojai, you know, people aren't gonna spend seventy dollars for an eighth the way they were three years ago. It's like, what do you got for twenty bucks? That's what I got today. So that's, I mean, we cater to a lot of working class people. Um, and, and they're not, these are not rich tourists. They're not spending, the, we don't even carry those kind of products, because, because even the, the tourists coming in are like, you know, just overwhelmed by everything that they just give what we, anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm rambling, but um it's, it's kind of a mess. I mean, you, you can read it, we're, we're doing well, because we provide such good service in the community. But it's not guaranteed. We have to, we have to stay new and innovative and provide fun experiences for our customers. And I hope that you got enough public comment tonight, um, in writing at least, about the need for alternatives to bars. There's really a need for an alternative to, to bars for adults in Ojai.
Okay. Well, I thank you. I think you've given us a lot of insights this evening, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hmm, Sherry, who's up? Oh, I'm sorry, Lucas?
I just wanted to clarify something that Chelsea was mentioning. She, it, it almost sounded like the city is, is somewhat um, behind the, the eight ball here, but I wanna just mention something. City, city, uh, cannabis revenues is roughly at thirty thousand dollars a month. Um, that's ten thousand dollars averaged per dispensary. And that's really kind of been stable for the last two years. So I think it's important to note that as well. I don't wanna undercut anything that's, that's being said here tonight. But I wanna make it clear that, that we're on pace in terms of where we were anticipating to be at. So it's not that we're, that we're not, but that we are.
I, I disrespectfully disagree. I've seen the numbers.
Hold on, Chelsea, I'm still talking. This is, the, the, the other thing that I wanna note as well is I did mention earlier that there's two or three that are, three manufacturers that are in process. One is literally a doorstep opening up, and I think that would cover the gap that she was talking about earlier, so. I think that's an important piece to note as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Sherry, we have anyone else wishing to speak?
Bill Miley and Jeffrey Kroll, but neither have their hands raised.
Okay.
Okay, Bill Miley just raised his hand, so there we go.
Good evening, Bill. Give us your best three minutes, sir.
Yeah, I have three and a half. For my record, my name is Bill Miley. My family and I have lived here since nineteen sixty-eight. I'm mostly aware of what exists and what is being considered tonight. From public information, those businesses seem to be well-integrated into the Ojai economy and culture. I believe our city government has received requests to consider what's going on tonight. As I understand, the planning commission charge is, one, consider new zoning locations on East Ojai Avenue. Two, consider new functions with the dispensaries, and allow more than three. It's important to look at the compa, at the comparison of alcohol beverage selling and ser- and those are cannabis serving, they don't serve, but they sell. There are many alcohol-serving uh, restaurants and such, one alcohol bar and one wine bar. Uh, alcohol-serving restaurants. We have three cannabis-selling businesses, dispensaries, and a bunch of CB. We have three cannabis-selling businesses, dispensaries and a bunch of CBD sellers. Next page. The ratio of alcohol business to cannabis business is weighed heavily to alcohol. Popular history to me says weed is not good for communities. Ah, but for many, and including me, that's now trash in the can of discards. Bootleg alcohol really doesn't exist now and eventually illegal cannabis will lessen as cannabis becomes more like a commodity. I read where arrests for driving under body-altering substances is almost totally dominated by alcohol consumption. Community problems with legal cannabis is not a concern. Our city needs to help even the playing field for cannabis. Competition for cannabis customers is growing remarkably. Portway Miami City just has created upcoming multi-day beach events for cannabis celebrations. Oxnard City is on track to license fourteen new cannabis dispensaries. This was in the County Star a couple days ago. So please keep the dispensary licensed to three. We need to support them totally. My logic says, one, zoning for cannabis business should be equal to alcohol businesses. Recognizing state law. Planning or providing an overlay on East Ojai Avenue is why I strongly suggest. Two, allowing nursery-growing starter plants for purchases by private people for no more than six. And allowing consumption lounges on. Added to the dispensaries now. And also if we zone Ojai Avenue then. We need to. Support our cannabis businesses equally to alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Sherry, do we have others who wish to speak?
I have Jeff Kroll.
Good evening, Mr. Kroll. I see your hand up. If you'll unmute, uh, tell us in three minutes what you're thinking.
Hi, how are you? Thank you very much. As you know, I'm the president and CEO of Shanger Law Care Centers. We're probably the original cannabis provider in Ventura County, having the longest history. And of course, gone through quite a few trials and tribulations in our, going on our twelfth year. Um, yes, the money, by the way, Lucas is, is true. It's very stable for the last two years. But the last ninety days have been quite a change. I can't attribute any particular reason. Some of the things that Chelsea has mentioned with Sesame Creek, I totally agree with. The fact is, the sky has not fallen. Arrest and the whole cannabis industry is certainly more acceptable. I really would like, in the future, and I wrote an email to all of you that I hope you'll be able to read. I wanna be in the, in the discussion to open up some of these additional markets. It not only helps us, all three of us, the retail shops. But it will help the manufacturing that's gonna come on board in the near future. I don't think there's anything embarrassing about having a little bit of a cannabis industry. We really did revitalize the Bryant Street Bryant Circle area. Now, I, I wish we were fully accepted in the retail market as other businesses are. At this point, I still have a mountain of challenges with regulations, fees, taxation. And even just basic operations of not being able to write off expenses and et cetera. With the interference of the two eighty rule. The more that we as a community can accept the safety value. And keep our prices down. In the wholesale area, it has gone way, way down, but so has the retail price. Because they've taken advantage in Port Wayami and soon to be in Oxnard and Ventura. Prices will be matched at twenty dollars an eighth. Not very much markup. And we may only make two and a half percent profit margin. So, you know, I'm all for increasing the cannabis footprint of acceptability. It may require a little bit of stretch on some of your comfortability. But let me tell you, that's where we're gonna be more competitive. If the city wants to make more money, if we, the purveyors in the cannabis business would like to keep our head above water. We'd need to have more options for clones and et cetera, micro licenses. There's lounges, there's lots of conversation that we can have. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you, sir. Sherry, do we have additional speakers?
There are no, there are no other people in the waiting room.
Okay.
The attendees.
I think then that we will, we'll close out the period of public comment on this item. And come back to the commission for deliberation, additional questions. Whatever is the pleasure of the commission here. Um, I noted with interest that, that uh, one speaker mentioned. That in the area of alcohol, we have businesses that sell and serve for onsite consumption. Um, and cannabis does not serve for onsite consumption. Uh, and that the, uh, the biggest problem we have with impaired driving. Is if, i- is with alcohol. And I, it, the logic to me is that those two facts are inextricably tied together. I don't know if we would have. More arrests for impaired driving. If we had a, a number of cannabis businesses that were serving for onsite consumption. And then people were driving home under the influence of cannabis. The way sadly, apparently too many people do, under the influence of alcohol. But I, I don't think that you can say that we need parity. In, in the um, in the amount of people driving impaired. And therefore, we should allow. Consumption onsite to bring effectively, to potentially bring up the number of people driving impaired. With cannabis. There may be other reasons to do it. I don't think that's one. Uh, any other thoughts? Uh, any other, any other?
I have a que-, I have a question because I'm, I'm ignorant, I think, on this subject. Um. So. What it? You know, the, a lot of stores are selling the CBD lotion and that kind of thing. Um, so. What is the, what is the regulation on allowing that? I mean, that is, that is a, uh. Something that can be sold through retail outlets, is that right? Just, I'm just, uh, uh, this, just for my own ed- education.
Can you clarify that for us? CBD oil and CBD gummies and all sorts of things.
Exactly.
I believe those can and are being sold by the um, dispensaries in, in Ojai.
But.
But also.
Also by ordinary retail businesses, I think.
Right, right. I've seen it. I mean, I've seen it.
And why is that? Is, is the, is the product itself? Um, like near beer versus distilled drinks? Or what are, what are we talking about here? How, how, how is this, uh, this group of CBD products? Or CBD oils or whatever? Different enough that it's not regulated in the same way?
I'll take, I'll, you want me to take a stab at it, Epi?
Oh, please do.
Sure. It's, uh, it's as simple as saying CBD is not a hallucinogen where THC is. So THC is really where you're getting the, the, the high, the elongated.
CBD doesn't have any THC in it?
No.
Okay.
This comes from the same source.
Epi, if you can even parody that a little bit further, but that's, that's the gist of it. That's why, that's why you're seeing it in local markets where like, for instance, the pharmacy, I think is.
Okay, so the, the product that we're, some of the products that we're talking about here. Is the ability to sell a lotion with the TB.
THC.
THC.
Right.
Okay.
So it's a, it's kind of like medicinal as opposed to recreational.
Yeah, if you were to look at it from an alcohol standpoint, it'd be like, uh, the non-alcoholic beer versus.
Near beer.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, there's a similar, there's a parity between the two. I don't think it's apples to apples, but it's something similar to that.
I think it's medicinal to recreational.
Yeah.
Well, that could be the same stuff, just two different uses. Jamie?
Yeah, um. Uh, I, I happen to know this, part of this uh, area of, one of the reasons you don't. Get good data on who is driving high is that there is not. Um, with alcohol, um, there are now generally accepted breathalyzer products which have been.
Field tests, yes.
Been through the courts and all the rest of that. Whereas the, the testing for um, somebody's being impaired as a result of smoking. Uh, or ingesting uh, a THC product. Um, is, is um, uh, harder to find a regular way that police officers can do that. I mean, they can do finger-moving tests and walking on the line and things like that, but it's, it's not the same as alcohol. So one of the reasons you're seeing. The people sort of um, uh, s- stretching on that issue, trying to figure out how we, how do we find out? How many people are driving impaired um, by cannibal, cannabinoids? And, and the, and the answer is there's just not at the moment. Um, good technology and there are some of it's coming on stream. Um, and uses cellphone, interestingly enough, the officer's cell phones and, and tests, which, cause the eyes, I guess, are a part of it. But, cause my first question is, what's the big, why are we solving this problem? If eighty percent of the population, I mean, if eighty percent of the revenue from the three. Firms comes from the three collectives or three dispensaries that exist already. Um, moving it, with the exception of handicapped people. Um. Moving it up to Ojai Avenue is not going to have the material impact on, on revenues. It does offer a new different business model if you think people sitting around chewing um, cannabinoid gummy bearers is um. Is going to be a, a great lounge experience. I don't know, but um, uh. And I, I, I guess I'm, where, where is this? Where's the need for it? And the funny thing is, last night, which was Fat Tuesday, and I still don't know what that, what that is. That was not my, um, my, uh.
First day of Mardi Gras.
Yes, it's related to Mardi Gras and it's not part of my, my, uh, my traditions.
Yeah, Mardi Gras is French for Fat Tuesday. Yep.
That's right. You would, you would eat a full meal because it was the beginning of Lent. Which is.
Last night was at a table.
Period. This was like the last day to bulk up and party and eat fat.
I was at a table at a party where there were about fifteen people. And I said that we are going to be discussing cannabinoids. If you wanna watch interesting television tomorrow. Watch the planning commission, cause we're gonna be talking about this. And I think that at least two-thirds of the fifteen people um, are cannabis users. They all knew where the, where the, which came as a great surprise. They all knew where the dispensaries were. They all used the dispensaries. There are furtive little glances among them, so obviously some of them have, have consumed it together. Um, uh, and uh, but, but to a person, what do we need this for? You know, I mean, you know, we, we don't, we don't need. We got what we need, you know? We know where it is and we know how to find it. And there are three different ones, so you know, there, there's competition there.
We have enough choice. Yeah.
Well, let me just say, I have heard from at least two businesses. Uh, that are in the Bryant Circle area, and I may have found the only two people. Who don't like having the, the dispensaries down there. And I don't know if we shouldn't do, treat this, this period of time that we've had as a test case. And that we don't just, I know there's no applicant here in the room, but there is, I mean, we have had two. Two people who would be impacted by this, speaking before it. But nothing scientific. I think, I actually, I think doing a bit of, a bit of research and finding out. Are there unintended consequences of having those, those uh, uh, businesses in Bryant Circle? And how do the people who own, own buildings down there feel about it? So. I know I went to a city council meeting about, I don't know, about a year and a half ago. And it was over the manufacturing, the discussion was concerning manufacturing. And there was a considerable amount of concern about, about odors and, and safety and things like that. Um, anyway.
I don't know. I, I have to, to piggyback on your, your comment about impairment. I recall, and this is several years ago, because I was talking with Paul Blatts, the late lamented. Council member whose son is now on the council. And I asked him the same question. How can you tell if someone is impaired uh, by the use of THC? And he said, well, if they're driving erratically, you can pull them over for driving erratically. But that's as far as the conversation went. Even if you pull someone over, there's no way of a police officer saying to a driver, you are legally. Not supposed to be driving because you're impaired. And there is with alcohol. Uh, maybe we will have something in the future that can, that can, you know, mirror THC levels or, or whatever turns out to be appropriate. But I, I am, I'm a little concerned that increasing the onsite consumption. Or increasing it from zero right now, apparently. Um, of, of THC is, is going to cause a problem that we do not currently have. And um, I don't see my way clear to headed that direction right now. Um, there was another point I wanted to ask about, and, and this was a point that was made in, in some of the correspondence. That, that we saw coming in as well as in the staff report uh, about. About cultivation licenses. Because then people wouldn't have to drive outside the city to buy seedlings. And that would cut down on vehicle miles traveled. The logic there is inexorable. But it applies equally to any business that does not currently exist in Ojai. And there are a lot of things that we don't have here, and I think we're all happy that, that we, that we don't have them here. But, and excuse, excuse the perhaps coarse example. But I don't see any strip clubs up and down Ojai Avenue. So people that want to frequent them have to leave town. And that increases vehicle miles traveled. Is that a reason to say we should have them? I don't think so. And so, like I said before, there may be other good reasons for coming to certain conclusions, but I don't think that's one. Uh, go ahead, uh, Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yeah, this may be a question for Epi or Lucas. Um, are you aware if uh, one of the, any of the three dispensaries actually sell seed? For someone to buy and grow their own? You know, they're allowed to have six plants. Are they allowed to sell seed if they ha-, if they have it? So in other words, not the plant itself, but just a seed, like a packet of seed, like I'd go buy watermelon seeds. Grocery store, could I go into one of those three dispensaries and buy, you know?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any of the three that, that, that do that. Uh, we could bring Chelsea back on and ask her if she, if she does that, right? But actually, very specifically.
To know.
I think our code actually very specifically identifies, um. The no cultivation with the exception, obviously. But you're talking about the sell of seeds.
This is no, yeah, this is a cultivation. So in other words, like.
Seedlings, yeah.
Yeah, so we do sell seeds already. Okay. The iss-, the issue, there's a, a lot of people can't pop seeds or they don't have time or expertise. And so it's just for some reasons, uh, other reasons, it's nice to have clones and people wanna buy clone seedlings. Or they want us to be able to pop seedlings for them.
Okay, so it's kind of like, when you, instead of starting tomatoes from seed, sometimes I like to go to the nursery.
You get the starters. Yeah, think of these as starter packs.
Little tiny pops, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, but the thing is, we, with clone, yeah, you just, it's, it's exposure to different genetics right now. We have to source all of our clones from. And but the thing is, we with clone, yeah, you just, it's it's exposure to different genetics right now. We have to source all of our clones from LA as the closest warehouse. So we would be, we would be able to, it, you know, it it would be a manufacturing source of tax revenue. Again, like Councilmember Haney spoke to, this would be a a new source of revenue for the city. It's cultivation tax that you're not currently collecting, and we wouldn't have to source it from another company. We could brand it as Ojai. You know, Ojai seedlings or whatever, and and it's small, it's just tiny, tiny and indoor. And they're not flowering, so there's no odor, there's no, there's no. You know, problem, just their little starter pack, so people can buy them, they can get their legal limit, take them home, be happy, hobby growers at home.
Okay, thank you very much, Chelsea. Appreciate the clarification. You have some, have another speaker?
Jeff Crowe would like to speak again, he has his hand raised.
I guess we can reopen public comment. We haven't had that many tonight. Go ahead, Mr. Crowe.
Uh, thank you very much. It's not really a public comment, it was just a clarification that you all were discussing. About the testing of CHP, there was ten million dollars given to this state. California Highway Patrol in order to develop a test, it's not been developed as yet. The other thing about CBD products, if it doesn't contain more than. Point zero three percent of THC, it classifies as a hemp plant. Under the federal statute and the Farm Act, hemp is legal. Now, is there a problem with CBD medicines or products on the market? Absolutely. Because it's not tested. We as a three dispensaries cannot have any CBD product that does not have. Along with the receiving of it, a COA certificate of acceptance. So all of our CBD products are tested. Big difference than a CBD store that generally has two thirds of its inventory not tested. Currently, right now, in the hemp world, eighty percent of the hemp plants are containing heavy metals. And pesticides because they are excellent extractor or soil conditioner. So part of Chelsea's effort of doing clones and giving education is similar to mine. We want to educate the public of how to properly grow their medicines or their recreational. Desire with cannabis, but I'm a big advocate of testing. So CBD products in retail stores, those products should have. A test report similar to what we are required by the state. I hope that clarifies a little bit of some of the background. I helped. Do some of the drafting of some of the rules and regulations that are currently. Uh uh unfortunately, uh binding us and hobbling us, so. Anyway, I'd be more than happy to help you understand some of this technology and.
Stay with us, Mr. Crowe. John?
Yeah, I just had a question for you, Jeffrey. Um thank you for the explanation on the uh the seedlings in the nursery. Um I could certainly see where there'd be a an opportunity there. Um I I guess I'm still kind of. Trying to figure out how um you know, expanding to Ojai Avenue or. Um going, opening up like a lounge um along this, along the uh the avenue there, how would that benefit uh the business? I'm just, I'm just.
Let me tell you, I feel that we, any three of us that moved to Ojai Avenue. If it were one of us, two of us, three of us, we would increase our sales by thirty to forty percent in a calendar year. There are a lot of people who cannot find us. Any one of the three of us, you may have put us within two hundred feet of each other. But Ojai Avenue is not necessarily something that's easy, and we certainly don't have what you would call foot traffic. At all. In the Bryant Circle area.
Right, I I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if if you go to Ojai Avenue, is there a certain clientele you're targeting? Are you looking for more of the tourists?
The fact is, most, there are many, many dispensaries that are in trafficked areas that have sidewalk traffic beyond it. They basically block out or blackout all the windows. They have the agreement of eighteen or older with the medical recommendation. Twenty-one, it's, no one can enter the shop unless they are properly authorized to do so with the state law. So that, in addition, we probably bring between three to four hundred people a week. To Bryant Circle. These are people who could be also brought to the Ojai Avenue area of traffic. There are a lot of people who come up here, who come to our dispensary. They have to get back in their car, go have a challenge parking in downtown, where if they were able to park downtown and go to a store. They would eat lunch. They would ve- frequent our other, so you want to increase some of the foot track, take four hundred to five hundred people a week. That are going to Bryant Circle and put them, some of them into the Ojai traffic, and you'll help all the businesses flourish. Including cannabis.
Right, I I guess my my question is, I'm just trying to figure out the target clientele. Is it? Is it local Ojai folks or is it go beyond that?
I'm a little different than Chelsea. I don't have eighty percent of my traffic. Coming as locals because I was shut down for two years. Which I'm still reeling from that in uh event. Plus the event of having voting members who were soon to find out. That they are going to be very, very angry at a decision that was just made by the appellate court. And there are three hundred and fifty people here in this valley who are going to be very, very upset. So the fact is, most of my traffic comes from Ventura, Northside. Some from Camarillo. If you do the service properly. People come from wherever they need to come, especially on the medical side for us. Uh because of our um extensive background. And the training and the knowledge that all three of these dispensaries hold. And we offer that at no charge. To help people understand what cannabinoids and THC, and by the way, CBD. Is the total of eighty-five non-psychoactive cannabinoids. And the number is growing. There could be as much as a hundred and fourteen different cannabinoids. Each having the need for research and. Experience in in the medical field as to which cannabinoid helps what condition. We're getting better at it. We now know about sixteen of these cannabinoids. Being beneficial to certain types of health conditions, but this is the discovery that the customer has to make. We can't prescribe and we cannot diagnose. We can only provide the best quality tested products. In the cannabis field and also in the CBD field as well. Not relying on untested CBD products.
Got it. And then I I know you've been around the industry for a little while. Um just curious if you've seen any uptick in foot traffic with. The opening of the caravan outpost or the Ojai Brewery or anything like that?
Not not necessarily uh directly to us. So in other words, we know who the caravan. Population are, and we've actually offered to help send customers to them. And them to send customers to us, but that's a pretty new kind of. Relationship. I I I I agree with the sentiment of alcohol being. The difference in cannabis is you don't lose touch with reality. As stoned as you can get, you still know right from wrong. Alcohol is a different situation here. Alcohol is. You literally lose touch with reality and you don't know if you're harming another. That that's basically, I would much rather have someone behind the wheel of a car. Who has has some THC in their system, and by the way, it stays in your system for thirty to sixty days. So there's no current test like alcohol that you can measure a specific level. In the blood, and that's the challenge. It's really subjective to the officer. That does the evaluation at the time they do the the actual RU impaired study right there at the vehicle.
Thank you, Jeffrey. I appreciate that.
One more quick question perhaps on this on this seedling business. Uh are these like um? Like carrots or or tomatoes, tomato plants in that they come one at a time? They grow, they blossom, you get fruit, whatever. Um and then. And then that's as big as it's gonna be? Or is it like iris or other bulb plants where if it gets big enough, you can keep splitting it and you can grow your. Grow your cultivated area and your number of uh plants that you have. Having started from a small number.
That, are you asking me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The thing about clones uh is seeds are a better start. But it is harder for a person to grow from a seed. Clones are a cutting off of them, what we call a mother plant. That mother plant can stay alive, cutting clippings off of it. Indefinitely, if you provide more than fifteen point five hours of light continuously. So naturally, a hemp plant or cannabis plant is an annual. It grows, it vegetates, it flowers, and then it's produces seeds and dies. We interrupt that cycle by taking all the males away. In order to increase the bud or flower attraction. Of the THC getting higher and higher. So the older the plant is, doesn't necessarily mean. That you're going to be at a higher THC level. The age of the clone is the age of the mother plant. If you do not properly care for it and control the light. It can flower and they're only anywhere from four to six inches tall. And they're single potted rooted branches of a mother plant. That's what a clone is.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go, go. What was your?
Uh I I guess maybe I didn't artfully. Set up the question. If I if I came to you and bought six seedlings. And took them to my basement and provided them with the appropriate light and fuel and all of that. Could I eventually have six mother plants in my basement?
You could have six mother plants, but that's not the end game for you. You actually want the plant to flower. Because that's where the production of the CBDs and the THC reside is in the flower of the plant. Not in the leaves of the plant. The leaves have a different other benefit for juicing and creating more of a. Uh a health drink. So as you're growing your plant, you can literally strip off live, living leaves. And put them in your juicer and have the health benefit of CBDs from that source.
Okay, but I could, but I could buy seedlings from you, grow them into mother plants. And basically then do the same kind of business that you do with mother plants. Or that you would like to be able to do.
Well, in in my case, I haven't. I'm I'm not interested in doing mother plants and. Doing cuttings. Chelsea wants to do that type of business.
Okay.
I deal with the prov- providers down in LA where I can select certain strains. By the way, just because a person buys six plants doesn't mean he's going to be successful with six successful plants. The failure rate is fifty percent. So they may only have three plants at harvest.
I wish my failure rate in my vegetable garden was as low as fifty.
Uh yeah, you and me both.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Crowe. I appreciate your insights.
All right, bye.
Bye. Sherry, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes, we have. Michelle Rosenbloom and then Bill Miley.
I thought we heard from Bill Miley already.
We did, but there's Michelle Rosenbloom.
Okay, Ms. Rosenbloom, uh you have three minutes. Tell us your thoughts, please.
I think you, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to make one point. Um you know, for you that think that uh. You know, there's not a benefit for the dispensaries moving on to Ojai Avenue. I'd like to flip the equation. And if you took all the bars that were on Ojai Avenue and in the arcade. And you moved them all to Bryant Street and told them that you're not allowed to drink at their bar anymore, they can only sell it to you and essentially become a liquor store. We, you know, it'd be really foolish to think that that wouldn't hurt their businesses. It goes both ways. You know, if you open up these retail spaces onto the retail space where it's zoned properly. Uh it just makes perfect sense that it would increase business, um which would increase your taxes, which it's a win-win for everybody. That's the only comment I want to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Uh Jamie?
Uh just, I I'd like to ask staff or um maybe one of the experts that we seem to have here. Um and that is, why would? Um I forget who said it, what that uh. Why would the window have to be painted out black? Why would it have to look like a porno bookstore? Uh what's the, what's?
That might have been a better example for me to use, yes, sir.
Uh I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, if you you can imagine. Uh uh you know, black painted windows and uh and by the way, I've seen the dispensaries in West Hollywood. And they are, they look, you know, they, is that a porno bookstore or is that a dispensary? Because they they both have black painted windows and. Minimal signage outside, because I guess the community wants to keep the fact that they're there um quiet, so. But I was just wondering, is there any? Is there any source to that? Uh is there any legal source to not allowing people to see in the store or? Um is that something that the store does, you know, to? Protect the customer from being observed, or is that uh?
Or protect passersby from the inside of the store? I don't know.
I'm just wondering because it was.
It's not a legal requirement that I'm aware of. Um I'm happy to look back into the code sections, but I've observed um dispensaries with. Uh clear glass windows um as well in many locations. Um so I I don't believe it's a state regulation, um but I also noticed that Councilmember Haney um has a raised hand as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Haney.
So I just wanted to know, where was Jeff Crowe forty-one years ago? That's what I want to know. Um. Um back in my day, um that's why I I was chuckling at some of the information he was providing about leaf versus flower. Versus bud. So. You know, there's a lot of information that still has to be gathered here. Um and I'm, what I'm hearing, and this is just my thoughts, maybe I I'm wrong for giving them, but my thoughts are that. There needs to be. Room. For this to be measured and to be um. And to be allowed to see if everything that you're hearing in the comments of your of the two owners. Um so maybe there's something to do short term and something to do long term here. And um and maybe that's what you guys might be discussing tonight is, how can you take existing dispensaries and allow? Some form of a lounge service in them. And then maybe you can measure the results of an increased tax base or something of that nature. But right now, we're going on opinion, we're not going on facts. Even the last comment was was. Somewhat common sense, and I don't disagree with it, but it's not fact-based. And that's what you guys need to be making your decisions on. Um Chelsea made a comment that. She feels that there seems to be us against them, but the reality is council-directed planning. To review this and have this discussion and conversation. So the community is forward-looking, the community is thinking about how we do this. And I think that you guys might be looking at some form of short term while you gather some more. Information on the long term. Um in the long term is moving these out to Main Street. Um and what that's going to entail, because I think that's a bigger, that's a bigger debate with a lot more facts that. That you don't have presented to you tonight, so. That's a bigger debate with a lot more facts that that you don't have presented to you tonight. So it's just a um just a thought.
Uh, yes, Kathy Nolan, please.
Yeah, I I know we said this at actually at the beginning of the meeting. But I'm just wondering if our next step is to, you know, continue this discussion. To um whether it's the next meeting or a future meeting. And we actually have the map. Or plan. That includes the the C ones zoning. You know, clarity as to the the Wild Tennis Academy, you know, what it is and if it needs to have a buffer zone around it. Just so we know, you know, exactly what we're talking about or what we're looking at as far as zoning. What properties are available? You know, what what could that look like? And I think it just might help us. In, you know, in our discussion and in our, you know, taking this further. But it feels like to me like if I had, you know, as um. Also remember, he just said, you know, it sort of like need to have the facts. And to me, that's one of the starting places. Is to have that in front of us. Cause I think that's really gonna help with the part of this discussion.
I I agree with you. Um. For example, if if there were a six hundred foot buffer around residential properties. What would that look like in terms of what space is available for this kind of business? Pretty, it's not necessarily easy to answer the question, but it's certainly a straightforward question. Uh, Lucas, you have your hand up?
Excellent point. I I could not agree more. I would say the reason why I didn't include the C one, which I can certainly do that in the future, and I can also include. Uh, what sorts of buildings, whether they're vacant buildings on the eastern end or vacant. Properties. I mean, what what are we looking at specifically? And what are the uses that are to the north and to the south? I think those are all fair pieces of information for this commission to have. I think what that map was meant to do in the beginning was to kind of set the table. It wasn't to be the definitive piece.
No, no, I I think you did a great job to.
I'm not, yeah.
Idea. That's great.
So I I just wanted you to know that it wasn't meant to be, hey, this is the map.
Oh, no, no, no.
This was the starting point, the discussion, and it was good. And it allowed us to ask some really important questions and to say, hey, now. Here's some more information that we need. Can we can we get that? And Lucas, I agree with what you're saying. If basically, it almost sounds like if we had our zoning. Map. Um, and then knew the uses and somehow maybe the bubble. Six hundred foot bubble could be in, you know, just an outline so that we could read what's underneath it. Uh, I think that would be really helpful.
Or even the zoning map with everything in gray, but you know where the where the residential stuff is. So you can draw the bubble. Um, and you know, keep it as simple as possible. And so, uh, Jamie, please go ahead.
You know, I think in um. The question at the beginning that I I asked, um, sort of knowing the answer, but wanted to fish it out. Is that um, we know who the applicants are, but the problem is there's no application. So it's it's kind of squishy and somebody can throw out eighty percent. I heard eighty percent at least three or four times tonight. For different for different things. That's sort of the number de jour. But I, you know, I. If there was an applicant who was seeking to do something and came to the organization and had a specific plan. And we could then have this conversation around a specific plan, but it's sort of a a squishy thing, um. As it is. And so, you know, I I I think that's one of our problems in trying to, we're trying to invent the. What what might be asked for um and uh. So I I I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That we're we have a format yet that is the the best structure for having the conversation. I, for instance, have no problem in with plants and, you know, you know, think of Tomato Mania only. It'll be Marijuana Mania. Um, but uh, you know, I have no problem with with the dispensary selling plants and people. You know, pl- planting the stuff at home in their raised beds. I mean, that's fine. But that's, but I'm not sure why it's in there, except that people don't wanna have carpentry where. The, you know, the the tail odor of odor coming out of the glass houses down there. Is palpable or it's uh Rancho uh Comulas, where those fields next to the. Uh, Rancho over there um had a really strong odor for two or three years. I think they may. So anyway, I um, I I think I think the idea, but we're sort of guessing. We have one person who's saying. That she wants to sell plants and the other guy is saying he doesn't want. Oh, it's fine, you know, but uh I think we need. We need to respond to specifics and I do think there are things we could probably do. To allow them to do things in their current spaces. It's not currently.
Yep, okay, okay. John, you had your hand up next?
Yeah, I've uh one quick question for Lucas. Um, so uh. I also would like to look at the M one area, like what other businesses can we put in that light industrial space? Um, do we need to change that zoning structure? Like, for example, if someone wanted to open a restaurant down there, could they do that? Um, if somebody wanted to put a, you know, like a a small little. You know, hotel or something, can they do that? Like, what what's allowable down in that M one area with a down in Bryant Street? Uh, cause I know.
That's in the uh the land use tables in the early part of Title Ten, Chapter Two.
Okay, okay.
Ten, two, ten, four, and ten, six are the table numbers.
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking of, um, you know, maybe the problem, one of the problems is is there's. They're they're off the beaten path, they're away from the foot traffic, but if we can enhance that area, which I think the city's been looking at to do for a long time. Um, it might bring more foot traffic in there. Um, I'm I'm still kind of on the fence on lounges, on how that works. I agree with Jamie. I think we need to see some sort of business plan. Some sort of idea about some concrete numbers about what an actual lounge could do. Uh, cause I I just I'm struggling to find the benefits, um, at least to the community. Um, and then nurseries, I I, you know, I I don't have a problem with the seedlings. I'm just, I'm concerned with uh the the. The uh the cloned plant or the mother plant, like how many mother plants do you need to do these nurseries? Do you need like, you know? Uh, you know, like an acre full of them or something, you know? Because uh that could certainly impact the 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 smell that everybody's worried about. Um, and then I don't have a problem with on onsite consumption at the dispensaries. I I think that's that's fine. I don't see a problem there, and I almost feel like that might be a blitz to start. Um, if we're gonna start looking at expanding this to eventually go to Ojai Avenue. Uh, but that might be a good, you know, test case, so to speak, uh, kind of what Randy Haney was mentioning. Um, but uh and and I don't like the idea of putting any more dispensaries. Um, it it sounds like competition's already a problem. I don't know if more more dispensaries would make competition better. Um, it seems like it would make it harder, so.
Likely would, yeah. Well. As I as I listen, I'm sorry, Kathy Nolan, please go ahead.
Yeah, this is just more of a general comment. Um. So I I what we're doing right now is we're not. Looking at this ordinance or ordinances or or variations to the ones that we already have or modifications. Based on an applicant. We're we're looking at it as just a general zoning change, something city council's looking at. Because now with based on all these new state laws. As we're seeing in other communities, people are now putting into their zoning code. Oh, now you can do such and such in a certain zone. So for instance, it's not just gonna always be these three. I mean, it may be, they may, these may be the only three that are ever there in the city of Ohio. But potentially some other business owner. Or somebody would wanna start a business and say that they wanted to do just, you know, a lounge. So I think we're we're looking at a bigger picture here. And um, so, you know, I'm glad that we're gonna continue this discussion because I do think, you know, we need to be very thoughtful about it. And and get as much, you know, basic information as we can so that we do make ultimately a really good sound decision. I mean, I have some opinion, my thoughts on it already, but I'm not I'm not even tempted to go into that tonight. I think um I'd rather can wait till we continue the discussion.
For me, it's it's too early to say where I would.
Exactly.
On any particular question.
Yep.
But I think there's a lot of lot of information we still need, and we heard from. At least two potential applicants. And certainly in the writing that we saw that come into the city. And in those two petitions, I don't know if you took a look at those two petitions that came in. Uh.
Yeah.
There were a lot of people. They didn't say they were from Ojai. They said they were from nine, three, zero, two, three. Well, that's Miramati up to the far east end of Upper Ojai. So I'm not sure how many of those people are from Ojai and how many are from the valley, quote, the valley. Um. But I don't think I don't think we yet know if, first of all, the definitions of some of the things. Some of the terms that are being tossed around at the moment. Uh, second, we heard from potential applicants and and certainly potential users. Through the parti- through the petitions who said, what a wonderful idea it would be to have all these businesses out on Ojai Avenue. Um. But we heard from the potential applicants. About, I I I I'm not sure if we were quite to the stage of the sky is falling. But it was along the lines of, oh, Port wineini's doing this and Oxtard's doing that. Somebody else is doing something else. But it wasn't clear to me that any of those things have actually been done yet. They may have been authorized in theory by a legislative body like our city council. But I would I would be kind of interested. If those if those things are about to come to pass. In other cities around the county or other areas around the county, I'd like to know then. Just one simple question. Does the incidence of driving while impaired go up markedly? If you have a proliferation of consumption lounges in a particular area? I have no idea. But I think that would be helpful to us. To know. Because. I mean, I read the police blotter every week. And there's a lot of drug use and there's a lot of DUI and petty theft and stuff. But I'd rather not see any more DUI than we have. And I'd rather not see another source of DUI of some other impairing substance. If it's going to be a big problem. And right now, I don't know if it is, cause I don't know that we have any data from anywhere. Within fifty miles anyway, if somebody else is doing this. And what are they experiencing as a result? I'd like to see some of that before making the recommendation to the city council. Yes, that means that we we as a city could be behind the power curve. But Ojai has been a culturally conservative place. In a number of areas for a long time. It's a cul- it's a culturally progressive place. In a number of different areas and has been for a long time. But I think that in all those cases, we begin to gather some data and we can see the pros and the cons. Of any particular kind of economic or whatever decision. And then begin to judge, is this is this decision right for Ojai? And I'm not ready to say that I have anywhere near enough information to come to a decision. On any of these three questions. I think that we're sorting them out very well. And if we have another meeting with a different set of maps and maybe some more definitions. Maybe some more information on what's going on around us. Then we can start to make. Better informed impressions and hopefully better informed decisions. Before we make a recommendation to city council. Any other thoughts? Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Uh, well, uh, Steve, I I guess I feel a lot of the same way. Um. I I'm also concerned, Ojai's not, we haven't been really good about regulating businesses. I mean. So and you know, in terms of looking at. It's. Really detailed ways in which they can or can't operate, uh, limiting the number and that kind of thing. Um, that said, I um. A- and also I'm not. With regard to expanding uses in the the industrial area, I said before, I'm not, I I am very concerned about. More protecting the industrial nature of that area as uh as opposed to bringing in retail uses. Um, because I think we need to preserve that kind of uh opportunity for industrial. Um, uh. Jobs that uh industrial businesses that would create jobs for our community. Um, so I I would be, I would be okay with going ahead with getting more information regarding the mapping. So that we really can see exactly what parcels we might be talking about. Um, and the Wild Academy, evaluating the Wild Academy as a school. I don't know that I would rely solely on what's in the business license. Because I think if they're a school, they're a school.
Well, because I've heard that all the wild students go to Nordoff or Matilah. I don't know.
Uh.
If that's the case, then it's not a school. If that isn't the case, if there are actually academic classes going on in that locale. It's hard to say it's not a school.
But that should be, that needs to be looked into. And um and as a part of that mapping, I would definitely add. Uh. Well, uh. Specifying what's residential property and including the at least a six hundred foot buffer from that as well. Um, I think maybe it would be helpful to look at other um communities that have. Um, maybe allowed expanded uses of the dispensary dispensaries with um. With the lounge or the selling of plants. Small scale nursery growing. Um, let's let's try to see what other communities may have already done. Um, and may maybe that'll help us kind of evaluate what's what's appropriate for Ojai as well.
Amen. It's often said, life can be difficult when you learn from your mistakes. But if you can learn from someone else's mistakes, it's a whole lot easier.
Yeah.
Um, Epi, I think we asked you a couple of questions to to look into. And and Lucas, if if we could, uh, I just my thought now, I'd ask for everyone to to say yes or no. If we could have some some plain maps of the city that showed. What you showed us tonight without all the without all the background clutter, let's say, just the streets. Uh, with a maybe a six hundred foot buffer and the thousand foot buffer that Jamie brought up about Sacra. San Francisco and then maybe uh a a corresponding pair of maps and and they could be. It could be four separate maps, so we can look at them all as individual examples of a six hundred and thousand foot. Buffer zone around residential property. At least then we have a general idea of if you set this kind of rule, this is the effect on. This part of the business community. We'll at least have that idea, and if we compare that with experiences from other localities. That are doing or or have done any of these things that are now suggested. That would be a big help. If everybody else is saying, well, next year we're gonna do this. Then um. I'm not ready to say, well, we'll go do it right now and then all the rest of the county can learn from us. Um, there's there's enough risk in it for my personal taste. That I would much prefer to learn from someone else's mistakes. Kathy Nolan?
Yeah, I have a question, and this is for Lucas. Uh, Lucas, I believe in the staff report, you mentioned that it wasn't required, but you did notice. Provide noticing, is that correct?
Right. Yeah, and that was. That was.
Go ahead, sorry.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the paper. It wasn't like a five hundred foot buffer. It was to the specific businesses that had shown interest. And individuals who had shown interest. Um, that was just.
Oh, okay.
And the reason I was asking that was I wasn't sure if it was a certain radius. Beyond the existing businesses on Bryant. So in other words, like who actually potentially was noticed? Um, because I know earlier we had just mentioned, um. Gee, I wonder what some of the other business owners are experiencing right now on Bryant. And that's kind of where I was going with the uh. Noticing, wondering if they had been noticed and.
That wasn't a geographical noticing. That wasn't a geographical noticing.
But it wasn't a geographical.
Not at this, now, I could, I could do that in the future. Uh, what comes to the next. It's not required, it wouldn't be like a ten day notification, but I could certainly do that, um, if the commission is interested in that.
It might be a good idea to get some feedback or, or give them opportunity to show up or not.
Sure.
See, I, I do believe there are a lot of single family people, people who live next to vacant lots that could be developed into lounges and they have no idea this conversation is taking place. Um, so I, that's part of it. I think context is everything. I think also the business community, we want to know what the business community thinks about this because they may say, I'm trying to develop a clientele like this and, you know, boy, this is gonna blow it right out of the water or not, you know, but I, by the way, the, um, tennis academy uh, uh, brags about their academics and it's a full academic program and they have graduation and so it's.
Okay.
It's, it's not the Nordoff School with a, uh, an athletic program run by a while, um, so.
Also, I didn't, just another side comment, I didn't, there were several places in the staff report, I think it was coming maybe from the dispensary business people, but I didn't, I don't think there were many places in Ojai that needed to be revitalized. I thought, I thought, I thought Ovi- Ojai business is pretty vitalized, so.
Well, the, the east end along Ojai Avenue has a lot of empty spaces right now.
It's quiet.
Unused spaces.
It's quiet.
I'll grant you that. One, one serious question might be, do we want this business in those spaces?
That's.
That's exactly.
One of them.
Yeah.
Well, to, to try to wrap this up a bit before we all wind up thinking about the next item tomorrow. Uh, Lucas and, and Epi, do you feel like you've gotten enough questions that you can sink your teeth into coming back at a subsequent meeting? And if so, are we talking about a month from now or? Cause I also have a question about schedule and El Roblar. Which for me personally is a bigger, a, a bigger, more urgent question than whether we are relocating lounges or dispensaries to Ojai Avenue.
So just for clarification, I want to stay away from Hotel Roblar. We're only talking about cannabis currently.
No, I understand, but I didn't, I, I wouldn't want you to commit to come back and we restart this whole discussion two weeks from now.
Yeah, I, I think realistically, there's, there's some good information to unpack. And to be fair, I, I want to make sure that I have the time necessary to, to dive into this, have my staff dive into it, get those details, put it into a report, get those, those necessary visuals for us to really kind of, um, sink our in, sink our teeth into that second meeting.
Yeah, I, I'd rather do this once right than twice too fast.
Yeah, and I, I, it's, I think it's also important to note that a lot of really good questions have come up. I don't know that I was necessarily looking to write a staff report to answer all the questions, it was more of an idea. Uh, kind of a bubble type of scenario, these are the, many different variations of, of ideas. Um, just to kind of start the conversation. Getting some of those facts, I think is also critical in, in order to see if the, any of those even, even mesh out, right? Or if, if, if it's the way it is currently, and that's the way it goes forward, then that's the way it is. Right? From a, from a commission standpoint, we're making recommendations to, to the city council, so. But yeah, let me, let me do some of that, some of that fact check and make sure that we're not relying on opinion, but relying on some of those facts and some of those key pieces.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's kind of, there are some terms in here I don't understand right now. So if I were to say yes to this particular noun, what does that really mean? What is that thing and what am I saying yes to? And have other people already walked down this road and made mistakes that we can learn from? And what's the real impact of various restrictions that we might consider putting on the businesses or the lounges or whatever? That's kind of where I'm coming from. And I think because it's a discussion item, we don't need a motion to continue this either to a date certain or a date off calendar, is that right, Epi?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, well, if, if it is acceptable to the commission, I'd like to leave it with, excuse me, with Lucas and Epi to go away, ponder, create, research, things and tell us when they feel ready to have us do another more informed discussion of these same topics. And then maybe we can make some good recommendations to city council. Uh, Jamie, please.
May I make a suggestion that, um, for the next meeting on this topic, that Lucas just put together a work plan that he is proposing, or is the things he will study and how he will do it. There may be, there may be advisory services that we could hire who are.
Oh, oh, now there's a good idea.
Yeah, who have expertise in this, I don't know, I, I have not a clue, but, um, we, there are so many communities who are grappling with this, it would seem to me that maybe somebody who could reduce the, uh, you know, I am worried, and we all want to be responsive to those people who are submitting applications for their buildings and we want to be, not get a bad reputation in the community for being bad for business. So we want to respond to them and we do have, we do have floating out there El Roblar. And there are other things as well that we should opine on, but, um, uh, I'm not sure that we necessarily have the correct expertise, um, to chew on this, um. A- and, and put together the report, which we, I do think we're gonna need a bunch of pieces of data before we start winging it, I'm, you know. Um, I, I thought that everyone of, all three of these vendors now, they were gonna be wanting to sell tomato plants or marijuana plant only to find it, well, that was her, but that isn't me. And it's like, you know, so there's no, you know, we don't have really a, we don't have the applicant yet, we don't have the, uh, you know, a, a specific, this is what we want to do. I want to spend Randy Haney's money.
He's in my mind. Okay, I, I have one, I want, one thing to comment to make out here, it's right along the, the lines of what Jamie said is, is the applicant or the client, to me, is the community. The decisions that you make.
Yeah, the decisions that you make. Four members of the community tonight.
The, the decisions that you make as a planning commission, the overriding um, thought process has to be the benefits to the community, not the individual. We can't regulate supply and demand. It's just, that's not our purview. That's not the city councils and that's not yours. But our purview is, is what is in the best interest of our community. So I am hoping that as you, um, dig into this, because it is, it, it, it's gonna be a dig, a deep dive, that you come out of it recognizing that there may be winners and there may be losers. But it's not intentional regarding any specific business. It, it's what's the benefit to the community? And I think if we keep that in mind, it'll answer a lot of the questions that you guys have asked tonight.
Yeah, that was like, that was part of my first question that, um, that I had asked about, um, what's the benefit to the community? And I think as we're looking at the analysis, um, if there's a way that we can quantify it or look like, you know, like Steve mentioned, um, look at other communities, you know, are there, are there examples of, of lounges that have done really well, that are really successful, that are embraced by the community, you know, what kind of, uh, benefits does it provide, you know, some sort of tangible thing that we can look at, I think would be very helpful.
My first question would be, are there any lounges within fifty miles of us that we could be used as an example? I don't know. And that might take a while to answer. So. Are there any other, any other, uh, rocks we'd like to load into Lucas and Epi's backpack? Or, uh, the interim before the next meeting on this topic? All right, well, let's leave that there for the moment then. And move on to our agenda item five. The priorities and work plan list for the planning commission and community development department and continue to monitor the work plan. Lucas, you want to talk to us a bit about this?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so as we all remember, well, I think most of us here, remember the joint meeting back in August where we kind of set, set the stage for several items that we're seeing here on this, um. Uh, I'm calling it kind of a priorities, it's kind of a work program, I, I suppose as well. The general plan update elements, that is, that continues to, to move on. Um, and we're having bi-weekly meetings, updates, we're looking at documents. Um, this commission saw on a special meeting, uh, the concepts for land use and transportation. Like we got some really good comments and we even spoke about it today pretty specifically, uh, with the consultant. So I think, I think that one is moving al- along, the affordable housing goals and policies as a part of that piece, um, as we all remember, we sent off the housing element, um, approved by city council back in October. Um, we've actually received comments back from, from HCD, but they are very minor, um, and.
Nibbling around the edges of.
Yeah, they're very, they're nitpicking at this point, which is a little bit frustrating, but I'm just glad that we don't have anything looming where we had missed something. So I think that's, that's truly a win, because I've been hearing from some of the other communities and, um, some are, have already been approved, some are, are looking and reeling, trying to figure out how to get their housing element approved, given the, the large number of Rena up, Rena owners that they've been assigned, um, but I think we've been lucky. Uh, but I think it's testament to this, to this community, to this council, to staff that aggressively went after and ensured that we were given the correct, what I would deem to be the correct and appropriate number that we have currently. So, anyway, um, the second item is fire suppression mitigation, we're working on that actually, um, internally. And I think that's something that, uh, that's a fuel modification, safety element, that's actually two pieces tied both to the general plan update, but then also there's fire suppression mitigation that council has provided direction to staff. Um, which is also a part of what we do already annually, but we're doing kind of a two point O deeper, deeper dive and getting, um, individuals out there, uh, aware of, um, fire suppression and making sure that we're reducing some of that fuel that's out there. Um, I don't want to go into too much detail, I'm just kind of giving the overviews here. Uh, cause I know Epi might get mad if I start talking specifically about some of these things. Formative businesses ordinances, I'm actually, uh, looking at, um, making some progress on that, I know I'm meeting with individuals, I've actually had some conversation with some, some, uh, some other cities and getting information from them as well, so it's, it's fact finding at this point. It has been in a bit of a slump, but I will say that we're, we're kind of getting out of it. Uh, the tree ordinance, uh, that's ongoing at this point, but I know that this cap, this commission is, is very interested in seeing, seeing where that goes, um. The parking study and Sequa guidelines, I know at one point we had talked about that, um, I could see that moving forward in, in the, in the future, just not sure of a date, and that will be before this commission. Um, the same thing is true with parking study and the program itself. But I think we can anticipate seeing something. The design guidelines, map and policy review, um, that is actually really close, it's just a matter of, of, um, getting kind of the final touches before we move forward. Um, the same thing is true with title, title ten.
On the, on the design guidelines and policy review, I noticed it says more flexibility, those are words I'm hoping to see. Um, but, but in fact, are we then looking at uh, going back through the land use tables again and making an actual recommendation to city council as to, uh, how those land use tables might be consolidated and modified, or are we talking about some other aspect of it?
I think you're, you're talking about the title ten update. I know this commission is.
Well, that's, that's how it's implemented, but.
Right, I think you're, you're talking about, um, the use table where we're merging several tables into one, right, kind of a mega table, if you will.
Uh, we went through that, yes, a couple of years ago.
Yep.
But, um, is that what you're talking about here?
No, these guidelines, that's something different. We've got several guidelines within the downtown, um, district. And some of those actually overlap and it's confusing, some of the policies then confusing, so we've got it, we've got to sort that out.
Okay.
Um, the last one is review cannabis, that's actually something we just talked about tonight, so. We are making progress on this list. Um, just know that with each meeting, we're gonna be having that discussion in terms of progress where, where these items are at, so. So we don't lose sight of these items over this next year.
I think it's a good thing that this, that we look at this page every meeting. And, and I know that we all, at least in the backs of our minds, are, are aware of the fact that it's a lot easier for us to ask questions and then sit back and wait and see how you churn through finding answers to those questions. Um, it's nice to see nits picked from HCD and it's tedious, but at least straightforward to deal with that sort of thing. It's the deeper questions, a lot of which we've been hearing tonight that are, that are not straightforward to answer and gonna require a lot more effort. And so I think we all recognize that, that we keep piling rocks into your backpack, as I said. And, and.
Well, I work out in the mornings, guys.
We need to be patient about that, uh, and, and be as helpful as we can. If any of us know people, let's just take tonight's cannabis discussion. If you, if you know people from outside the city that, that are uh, involved in this issue. I don't want you to go away and ask questions and write a report and bring it back. But if you know someone, give that reference to Lucas or to Epi. And, and let them dig into it, because it'll probably speed up their work a little bit.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not doing this research in a vacuum, that's for sure.
No, but, uh, you know, the old, the old story about lighting a candle in the dark, the light, the brighter the candle is, the farther you can see, but the more darkness you can see as well. So. I think we need to keep in mind that, that we're asking some hard questions of you. And we need to be patient with getting good answers back to those questions.
Agreed.
Anything more from fellow commissioners? Let's flip on over then to, uh, agenda item six. Future topics, future agenda items.
Yeah, so what we've got is, our next meeting is March sixteenth, that's a regularly scheduled, um, meeting. I see on here, we have the appeal of the director's decision of a lot line adjustment and, um, minor variance, it states here a variance, but in fact is a minor variance, eight oh three country club. Um, that is scheduled for the sixteenth and you, it will be before this commission on the sixteenth. There's also another item that I should mention. See it. Oh, yeah, it actually is, so below, it identifies pending future agenda items. The second item there is a variance and DRP to add a deck in the setback and remodel elements on the second floor. The address is one zero zero one North Montgomery Street. Um, that item is ready to move forward and has been cleared for, for hearing, so you can.
You'll see that on the sixteenth?
Yep, you'll see both of those items on the sixteenth.
Terrific. That sounds like they're, uh, fairly close neighbors to the Tiplin Ramble. But, um, I, I guess not quite as far north as the church there?
Uh, it is, it's pretty far north, much further north than, uh, Tiplin Ramble, it's beyond, it's north of Grand. This side is, so you'll be seeing report on that, it'll give you the location as well.
Oh, Tiplin Ramble is three fifteen?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay. Ten oh one.
One zero zero one, it's a thousand and one north.
Right, okay. Very good. Any other questions for staff?
Um, I want to also mention the. I've had recent conversations with another potential pro- uh, project. And that is for the April sixth, I think you very well could see, um, Hotel Ojai on the sixth as well. I'm putting a question mark by it right now, only because I just recently. Have had conversations with them, and that all. During my, during the update for the next, we're going into commission, uh, staff. Comments and updates, I'll update the commission at that time on. Something that's happened.
Are we ready to hear, I'm sorry, I should raise my hand, are we ready to hear? Um. What's going on with the um, uh, HPC, uh, vis a vis the Hotel Roblar?
I, I prefer to talk about that during the update, um, and it's an informational item, it's not necessarily meant for discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is meant for information.
I, I think, I think you say and hold that thought for about two minutes, Jamie.
Yep, right, okay.
Um, all right. Then, are there any announcements that any commissioner wants to make that are of general interest here? All right, well, let's hear from Lucas in general, CDD director comments, by the way, sir. Your, um. You have two levels of voicemail response. In your system there. One, you still say manager, the other one you say director. You should have someone look into that.
All right, well, I thought, you mentioned that to me earlier, I thought I fixed that already, but I guess it's still looming, I'll take a look at it again. Um, I thought I deleted that, all right. That's not what we're talking about, so the update that I have for this commission is on Monday of this week, the Historic Preservation Commission conducted a special hearing. And that special hearing was tied only to Hotel Ojai. And specifically about the Historic Resources Report that came forward by ARG. Um, that report, um, was dated and is dated February fourth. Uh, there was a lot of discussion that went forward on that and, um. They, the way in which our code reads is it's not necessarily a um, recommendation to, a specific recommendation with voting. To the commission, but instead providing specific comment. As it relates to the Historic Resources Report, so you'll see in the, in the report within this planning commission um, report. That'll be coming to this, to this commission, there'll be a lot of good information, um, and history that you'll receive. On, on, um, his, the Historic Preservation Commission's. Role, how they acted, um, and how they responded to the Historic Resources Report that was prepared for. Um, Hotel Ojai. So just know that that is. It, and they've already, so Historic Preservation Commission has heard the item, it is now ready for, um. The planning commission to hear this item.
So it's not an explicit. Thumbs up or thumbs down recommendation to planning commission, but simply, uh. Increasing the context for our decision?
Yeah, cause they're not, they're, they, the Historic Preservation Commission, because of the way in which this item. And the context of how the um, Hotel Ojai is tied into. Uh, what's the best way I can put this, it's not a landmark and it's not within a locally designated historic district. And it's not a site of merit, so it doesn't fit with any of those buckets, but it is. Designated through the state as a historic resources, because, because of that fact. Um, there is the need and a requirement. To satisfy sequoia's requirements for a historic resources report to be prepared. And per our code to be reviewed with comment, um. From our Historic Preservation Commission, and that is what happened and took place on Monday. And I, I want to, not, 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 chair quality, it's not a Q and A, it is informational at this point, I know Epi is about to. Unmute himself, it's informational at this point, there will be more information that will be provided within the packet. And, um, it's. The uh Historic Resources Report, I think, was extremely well written and I think covered, and I, I. I commend ARG for what they, the work that they did and how thorough they were in, in the evaluation. And I think the Historic Preservation, Historic Preservation Commission saw that and recognized that as well, so.
Thank you, and I wanted to publicly thank, uh, Brian A, the Chair of the HPC. And the rest of the HPC for taking this on. I know when we first saw the, the delay that was necessitated by the requirement. For this Historic Resource Report. Brian told me. When we get the final report back, I will call a special meeting and we will timely consider it and get things over to you. And Tuesday morning I had a text from Brian. That simply said, five to zero approval of the Arches facade for the El Roblar. So I knew that they had been through it and they had been through it timely, and I wanted to thank him for that, because he did what he said he would do. Anything more on your end, Lucas?
That's all, that's all I have on my end, um, in terms of updates, but I thought this commission would be. Would want to hear that, um, and knowing that. You're gonna be seeing Hotel Roblar very soon.
Very good. And then. For the closing act in our review tonight, we have Mr. Haney, Councilman Haney.
Am I muted? Please unmute me, um, you know what, uh, I spoke early and, and I, uh. I always question myself, should I or shouldn't I? Because I'm not a part of your discussion, I'm just. Here to provide information if you need it from council. Um, I am glad that a lot of the, the comes, some of the comments I made were followed up by you guys or were prior to me. Um, so I didn't feel a hundred percent out of place, but. Uh, thank you guys for, for the quality of the, of the deliberation. And the understanding of how deep you're gonna have to go, this is not an easy issue. And, and again, if we, um. Keep in mind that it's not, it's not about individuals or it's not about businesses, it's about community benefits. I think if we keep that, um, you know, written somewhere so that we never lose sight of it. And for my, uh. Time on council, um, I haven't seen. Um, seriously, I haven't seen any planning commission ever make a decision solely based on the need of an individual. So, um, you guys have, have, have been very consistent with past. Commissions and, uh, and I get one more month with you. And then I rotate off, but I will continue to listen, but, um, you guys just do great work, so thank you. Thank you.
We'll, we'll miss you, sir, and, and who do we get next?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, I, I don't even know where I'm going, so. I mean, you know, it's, it's interesting, you know, I'm at, uh, uh. Uh, V cog this morning, we got go, you know, Gold Coast, uh, Gold Coast Transit today, V cog, I lose sight sometimes of where I am. Um, and, and, uh, I'm sure you all do, and, and keep track of the small business I run, so. Um, but you know, that's what we do, we multitask, that's what human beings do, so.
Yep.
Good job tonight, guys, thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, discerning no other business before the commission tonight at. Eight forty PM, I declare this meeting adjourned, thank you all very much. We did some, we did some heavy lifting tonight and we'll do more of it on this issue again. But this was a great start, thank you all.